First one. First one is Mike Hethington, co-chair and land use supervisor.
Kay Wade, Fire Department Supervisor.
Breanna Sullivan, Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Supervisor.
Then the manager, Jay, you want to introduce yourself, come to the board?
Amanda Sassy, Rose Supervisor.
Jennifer Wingard, Public Safety Supervisor.
Thank you, we have a floor, but I'd like to introduce everyone, everyone else to introduce themselves.
Sure, Kyle Kelly, Co-Servicer Area Manager.
Margaret Tyler, also municipal employee, working for Kyle.
Josh Durand, Director of Parks and Recreation.
Hi, Amy Duboski, Municipal Manager.
Thank you. And I think we have one guest on the phone, two people in the room. Give an introduce yourself, Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Weston, I'm the Fire Chief of Gerwood Fire and Rescue.
And Rachel L. B., staff.
Hello, fellow Gerwoodians, Stephen N. Dixon, Director of Gerwood State.
Shelley Brown, Park and Recreation.
Thank you, welcome. Okay. Any disclosures from supervisors? Expecting any, okay. Do the meeting agenda approval? Do you get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to group agenda, it's written.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Do it by voice vote. Always a favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Okay. Announcements, publics, and goers to ask questions or provide comment, please raise your hand, away to be acknowledged. Our discussion will stay productive, please direct comments that will run out of members of the public. Keep your comments focused on business and discussion. Be respectful of everyone's opinions. We're in the middle of the budget cycle. We had our first budget meeting last week. Our special meeting number two is on August the 4th, 7 o'clock in Gerwood, Community Room. Budget meeting three is on August the 16th, 6 p.m. in Gerwood, Community Room. And we're expecting probably to approve the budget later that evening, 16th, our regular meeting. Let's dive into the agenda. introductions and welcome. Done the roll call. If you'd like to just introduce yourself.
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. My name is Amy Duboski. I came to Gerwood State, I was Deputy Commissioner at the Department of Commerce, Community, Economic Development. Prior to that, I was Deputy Chief of Staff to Governor Dunleavy. Prior to that, I was on the Ape, which is something for most states here, representing Chiak and Eagle River. So I feel like, I know, I think Chiak and Eagle River probably has a lot of the same rural type issues that Gerwood probably has. So I'm just very excited to be here. My past history and background, prior to coming into public service, I worked in healthcare sector for about 17 years, where I did business development and management, specifically in dental practices. But my specialty is corporate organization, reorganization, I should say. So I'm just really, I'm really thrilled to be here and to be in service to so many great Alaskans. So if anything, municipal manager's store is always open. And I just have an open door policy, if you have issues that affect your community or that you'd like to discuss, you can always come in.
Sure. My name is Josh Durand. I did grow up in Anchorage, I used to live in Pierwood, 337, Alton Place. I've been with the Parks and Recreation Department for about 18 years now. Well, as landscape architect, actually, we can see your planner, been director since 2019. From a Parks and Recreation standpoint, for me personally, for both residents and visitors in Anchorage and specifically Gerwood, you guys have an amazing system down there, add a lot of value from a recreation perspective. I appreciate it myself, and everyone that comes there does as well. You're well served with Kyle, everything he does, and I'm always here to help support and assist as needed.
Thank you. Should we do a brief introduction, start side or fill in?
We know each other.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll just defer, say my name, Mike Hethington, I'm a pool before, just over four years. Of supervisors. I've got lots of interests that's only discovered, discussing any of the stuff.
Kay Wade, new on the board, this is my first term, so trying to play a little catch-up. I was on the Public Safety Action Committee, just a subcommittee on GPOS for the last two years. What's going on? Gerwood resident for about 20 years.
Breanna Sullivan, I feel like I'm new to the GPOS. But last year was the first year I was on the board, it was all virtual, so I had the first few, a couple of person meetings. I've been in Gerwood about eight years, but grew up outside of Anchorage, so grew up recreating in Gerwood and elsewhere too. Very involved in the community, with volunteering and youth, and people of all ages, so I'm also excited to be here, thank you.
Manager, Jay, do you want to do a brief intro?
I guess I can go, because Amanda looks like she clicked up. This is Jennifer Wingard, and I'm newly elected to GPOS, but prior to that, I've been involved in the community. I've lived there 20 years in Gerwood, and I've been involved in everything from Rotary to the Gerwood Center for the Fine Arts and other things. So this is a nice, new and different thing to be involved in.
And I'm Amanda Sassy, also new to the board, have been involved in community committees for the last four or five years now, with Imagine Gerwood, our Gerwood Area Plan Update Committee, the Trails Committee, and various other volunteering, and really stoked to be here, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Now, we'll dive into topic number two. Building up the assets of service area. So this is a very dirty topic, and I'll try and finish it very, very briefly. One of the things we've been looking at over the past year or two is the issue of housing and other areas of community. And one of the tools that we want to use in various communities is tax penalties. And there was a change to code by the legal sector, which actually means expensive settlements far be applied on taxes to generate a service area. Which we could go with, so there's actually a chunk of our tax that we're exempt from currently. And when you look at where that comes from, there seems to be a sort of conflict between state statute to sue service area boards solely exempt tax rates, and municipal code to sue to exempt me, so we're exempt, and service area boards are in violation. And these two, these two rules kind of, these two, it's a statute sort of conflict with each other in our study. It's not, it's not an pressing immediate issue, but it's something, just wants this, wants this option. And it would be nice to get it back. So I started working with the Assembly members and set out some different people's first statements as well, to see if we could work out that's possible. I actually did bring it up, this is something, so. I can go, I can talk about this, but I do not want to, nobody else probably knows me too, I don't. Any questions, comments? Okay. Thanks. So let's dive into the main part of the meeting, discussing concerns and projects. Let's start with the Fire Department. We're sort of in the middle of contract negotiations, maybe Michelle can take us.
I can speak to it. Go ahead, Jay, go ahead, Michelle.
Okay, and I apologize, I hope you can hear me okay.
Yes.
I'm basically in a tiny closet at ICP. Okay, in a broom closet, trying to be quiet. So. For the last, one of the things that was, you know, as I used to be the Deputy Chief at Anchorage Fire Department in the administration. And one of the things when I came back to Gerwood Fire, now over four years ago, I looked very intently at the Fire Department budget. And one of the things I realized almost right away was that the funding mechanism seemed odd. And because there's a lot of, the EMS contract had not been renegotiated in a long time. And so the fire service area, the Gerwood Fire Service Area was in fact subsidizing area-wide EMS. And so part of the things we've been doing in the last three years is to go back to the administration and renegotiate the contract to get the balance better, so that Gerwood Fire Service Area taxes could actually be used for fire service area needs, because the other thing I noticed getting there three years ago was that we had a lot of aging out equipment and some other needs that were needed to be met. And we were really not keeping pace with the normal standard for the fire service in Alaska, for at least a suburban area. And so part of the past three years' work has been to re, to get the balance back. The, as area-wide EMS is the entire, as you probably all know, is the entire municipality, but the Gerwood Fire Service Area basically is a mile on either side of Elyeska Highway. And so all of that work that Gerwood does and has done for the past 60 years on the Seward Highway is in the EMS area, but not necessarily in the fire service area. However, fire service area funds are used to extricate people in car accidents, provide water rescue in Ternican Arm, and then water rescue in the rivers and Portage Valley. And so one of the things we looked at was how could we redo the balance? And so to do that, we provided cost estimates to the administration to provide funding for rescue services, and then also to recognize the amount of EMS work that's done in the, in the community. We, you know, one of the wonderful things about living in a tourism-based economy that Gerwood is, is that we are a destination magnet for a lot of people that are recreating, and oftentimes in the backcountry. And so those calls are a little, those EMS calls are also a little different than your normal garden variety Anchorage Fire Department call, EMS transport, because they often, oftentimes require us to access backcountry trails to find the person, package them and take them out. So that's a labor-intensive activity. At the same time, I think that providing a good EMS and fire service is part of that good economic draw. And I think it lends itself to a good economic investment, because if you want to have good economic investment in the Gerwood community, you want to have a strong, or at least a good foundation for fire EMS, so visitors have a good experience when they come, if they have a medical emergency or, or something else. And so along with those things, we also have to look at the benefit of the Seward Highway, and the fact that car accidents on the Seward Highway if not dealt with effectively, or, you know, they're shut down for a long time due to a car accident, also impacts the economic value of both communities on either side, Anchorage and the Kenai Peninsula. So, and with tourism dollars as well, with a vast amount of tourism, that tourists and Alaskans that go, travel on that Seward Highway. So along with that, we provided the administration through OMB, working with Anchorage Fire Department, a proposal to increase the EMS, to increase the EMS annual funding by $600,000. And at the time, the administration, the last administration approved $300,000 as the amount that would be approved. The contract, that is an annual increase to the EMS budget. Currently, that contract has not been signed, it's in the final, my understanding is it's in the final stages and legal. We do need that $300,000 of funding to complete the year this year. But I would, I would respectfully say that, recognize that we asked for $600,000, but we were told $300,000. And so if that contract isn't signed and we're not able to get that $300,000 in this budget year, we'll probably, again, have an issue of trying to fund EMS with fire funding, which is quite frankly, I think illegal under, you know, the charter, because you're taxing for use in a different location. And then additionally, along this way, this has been a long three-year process, something that I thought would be a maybe four-month process, three months of, or three years, going through this negotiation. There was a municipal audit additionally that proved our point, because people didn't necessarily believe me when I mentioned that the funding was messed up. And the municipal audit, I think, proved that there was a difference between, that indeed fire services were being, were being used, fire funding was being used to fund EMS. Any questions?
Just make your comment, I think your last point, Michelle, that this is a problem across the whole town, as you probably aware. I think two-thirds of the funding comes from fire service areas, but two-thirds are costly. So there is this mismatch, which financially doesn't make much difference, you know, because of what we outlined.
Thank you. Through the chair, Chief Weston, I think CDFD probably deals with a lot of the same issues, because they're outside of the fire service area as well. They have their own fire service area. When you say you've provided this information, I'm assuming it's the previous administration? Just for ease of sake and time, could you forward me some of this information you were referring to, your cost estimates? You know, I'm assuming with that, it also has your run volume, your revenue data. Do you have that all in one spot that you can share with me?
Yes, I think with a couple days lead time, I can definitely provide that to you, recognizing that I'm currently deployed down in Oregon on the Bootleg Fire with the Alaska team. So I will, I can get that together and send you all of that package.
Well, Michelle, if you've already given that to OMB, I can go down the hall and ask them, it's just we've had, we've had a changeover. So I just want to make sure I have all the relevant data that you believe makes your point.
Correct. I would love to actually re-provide it to you, because I, you know, I would like to, you know, I feel that there was a filter possibly in the last administration, and I don't want to see that at the OMB level. For instance, we requested funding for Rescue 41 with equipment on it. However, when it went to bond, it went without the equipment. So now we're forced to, if a fire act grant doesn't come through, we're going to have to figure out a way to find, to find equipment, extrication equipment for Rescue 41. So I would feel more comfortable providing all the information again in the backup documentation, just, just so you can look at it with fresh eyes.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, thanks very much, Michelle. Move on to our next item, housing rentals, accessory dwellments, etc. So, like probably every other resort in the community in the country, housing, housing available, let's see, housing cost is a huge issue. It's an issue of, it's seemingly, it's worldwide, in front of very specific circumstances, that makes it hard to work here. So I know there are several initiatives going, some that we've initiated, supervisors, some from the community, and others which have been, which are coming to the administration. So just to touch on a couple of things. We have a change to accessory dwelling unit code, which is going, just, we just approved, what we're going, is going through planning. We have, they're the acute, to an issue with the 90% or so, etc. in the community, and that has, it has a lot of impact on housing availability, but it also has an impact on stuff, we had a lot of issues with, some issue, it's a lot of issue, art, or a lot of issues with trash, things like that. And there's no regulation at all. There's requirement to pay rent tax, but that's it. So we often have problems, so, you know, there may be a problem. Like you said, people, you've just been one, two days, there's no way to communicate, you know, so. So we're looking at what we can do to sort of try and reduce some of the impacts there. And the other issue generally in housing, and the other, the other big thing, as you're aware of, is the, is the proposal to do, to have a house with a wall, just a little ceiling. Which HLb is managing, partnership with the public housing. Set out this, so that, we have a, so. So that we're very interested. We have seen a heavily redacted proposal, I think more redacted, expected, so it would be nice to perhaps get a little more information. And, you know, any updates, any updates we can get from this going on. Appreciate it, communities, obviously, it's really interesting. And there are a lot of other things. Any other comments, thoughts on board? I know we have some major representative here, it would be definitely helpful if you provided any updates on what's going on.
We have no updates on them, unfortunately.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, next issue, parking. Another initiative is, again, the co-change, is to change the parking regulations in Gerwood. We have exactly the same regulations to commercial property, as for example, but a very different, different things. So there's been very little, like, what we want to do in the last decade or so, I think probably what we're doing too. And typically, what we hear is that parking is a huge, the amount sizes relatively small in Gerwood, and not the amounts of them, the amount of parking required. It's a little mixed up. So we did a analysis over, whether you're taking about your parking, as you like, we did an analysis of existing use. And compare that to, to reduce that, so we, to reduce the requirement. So we just wanted to, again, we may have, may have some differences, lots of that area, but I think at the moment, that's probably going on. Any other questions, comments? Okay. The next one's industrial park. Do you want to take this comment, or do you have some, you have some practical issues with industrial park? GPOS side or service area side?
Well, I think the industrial park has always been an issue for Gerwood in the sense of having more industrial space. HLb, with the partnership with AU, was able to complete the first phase, three phases. And, you know, Shelly replaced me with this really well as well, there's lots of demand for more space down there. But it's just, really it comes down to, it's a, it's a funding issue, as most things are, and that, you know, so we're at, we're at $4 million, maybe $6 million needed to complete the next phase, which would just be putting in the infrastructure for road, lift stations, utilities, so, and then probably fill, to fill out the rest of the lots that are necessary there. So, so, excuse me, this has been a riding issue for a long time, and I think it just, it continues to be. And we'd love to find a way to HLb the money they need to complete the phase down there, so that can open up more, because there's a lot of industry looking in there, especially on the fishing side, looking to set up places for their boats, and then hopefully more commercial industry coming, as we develop more of the infrastructure. That's a big one now.
In general, economic development is something that we can't, want to encourage. And it's a combination of the back of the commercial land, and it includes a lot of, of its drivers. So again, we have to get outside of your, engage in both the rest of the period of time, so.
I think we'll, we'll have a very collaborative relationship, and I think the mayor is very keen and recognizes that Gerwood is not the same as downtown Anchorage or Midtown. And I think he's very receptive to being nimble to the requests coming from GPOS. I think it'll be, I mean, really, it is a unique part of our community, and I think he respects that and recognizes it. I think he'll be very supportive.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Constance, you mentioned that areas still need to be planted or surveyed before a lot of this development can come forward?
Yeah, well, they go hand in hand, having the money to plat means you have to have the money to construct, to put the infrastructure in. So, so you really have to have all the money to basically get it going and get it through, you know. That's the issue for us right now with the service area a lot, is that we're not on a platted parcel. So it's really difficult to get power, we actually don't have a tower to the lot, so we try to keep and put up form in the winter from plowing and things like that. We're on a temporary meter, which is off the lot, really have everything on the lot, so we can put outlets on our bull rail, put up lights, things like that. So we're still working at sort of permanent times down there, you know, like get into your storm and it's raining sideways, so we're trying to get equipment going. Trying to unlock the salt pile, the sand pile, you know, we don't have that. So plating would be the first step, you're really going to have the money behind it to get everything done, that requires the plating. So you usually have 24 months, or 36 months, 36 months to get it completed in. And so, you know, it's best to have all your money together so you can get the whole thing done. So, so, yeah, we have challenges down there, and we're hoping to get over the hurdle and bring, especially our industrial road maintenance lot into 21st century, so.
So, okay, we have HLb representatives here, is there, is there any active work on finding other sources left, and where to get to put up the infrastructure? That's a key word I hear very frequently in the news.
I am going through the budget right now, and that is a priority, that's all I can say about it.
Okay. So another two or three weeks, we should.
Yeah. Hopefully the next board meeting, it'll probably be.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other comments on that topic? If not, we will move on to our next one, which is the various community planning efforts. So we are in the middle, hopefully beyond the middle, hopefully towards the end, of rewriting our area plan, which is effectively comprehensive plan for the community. We've got, we've got a fair degree of support in planning at the moment, and we've had financial support from the Assembly. And I know previously some financial support from HLb, which is their biggest library in Gerwood Valley. Hopefully some financial support in the future in the way of the matching role. So we're at a point where we're doing technical analysis now, and we're, we've done a lot of community outreach, going to the vast, building the one, the land use map to share with the community. And then I think intent is to have a draft available, which is very beginning, it may actually be beginning, that's the slowest I'm scared. Maybe it will go through the process. And again, we've had, we've had pretty good support from the administration, specifically from HLb, and having, up to this point, so it's going to be welcome. And then the other major planning activities we have, which is going about, and is towards the end, is a Trails Plan. And again, I will add to Kyle, there's much more about this that I.
Sure. We're in the final stages of the Trailmaster Plan, we're actually just closing public comment today, it's been open for the last month. And we will be processing all that public comment, moving towards, you know, hopefully a final plan that we can work with on the subcommittee. It's a, it's a collaborative process with the Gerwood Trails Committee, they perform a subcommittee of stakeholders and representatives who help to lead the plan through, and, and it's turned out to be a nice plan, and we're going to take the public comment in, hopefully incorporate that, and then get it over the hurdle to start the approving process to move it forward. So, so, yeah, it's coming together, we just have these last steps to go through. So it's the first new plan in Gerwood in probably eight years, and first Trails plan ever.
Any other comments?
Always a good opportunity to inform how many different processes this Trails Plan will go through, and how different entities have a privilege. Can you line out Kyle, who has to see it?
Well, I will start with, I'll start with the Gerwood Trails Subcommittee, then I'll go to the Gerwood Trails Committee, then I'll go to the Gerwood Land Use Committee, and then I'll go to the GPOS or Supervisors, and then I'll go to the HLb Advisory Committee, and then probably off to possibly planning, but definitely going to UDC, and then to the Assembly. So I've been down in Gerwood 10 years of municipality, and I can tell you one thing, Gerwood is good on public process, heavy on public process. And so by the time. Heavy on public process. And so by the time it gets out of Gerwood and it's been approved out of Gerwood, it's definitely a well reviewed document or well reviewed issue. And then it comes up here, it goes through the process here. So, so there's, there's definitely another year of process and it's by itself. By the time we get it out and somewhere, or equally trying to get through, get it written, plan out, get something.
Okay. The other thoughts or comments? Okay, let's move on to secure track regulations. So speak to this briefly. About, beginning of, you know, in 2019, I think it was. There was a change in code that allowed communities to, or communities, areas to be designated as high bear activity. And there were several ones put in place that had to any trash samples by any place, waste companies has to be very resistant. And Gerwood was one of those, I think there's two. And it was, it's, it's been somewhat successful except for the fact that the, the actual traffic hours were in Alaska ways. They were initially certified in this week's last year. So they, the body in Montana have certified and tested this year. They tried to retest it last year. So they tested this year and turns out they. So we have a, we have a track provider, which is not meeting requirements. It's a curve, they're providing cars, we go from certified to bad system. And I think this was never expected, this was not anticipated at all. The expectation was, you know, it's supposed to be very resistant. So this has caused a some complacency around that management, as the code says, they haven't been, they haven't been. And obviously Alaska Wastes invested quite a lot in it, in particular. But it's still forcing problems with there, there's access to trash or associated problems around them. So, you know, it's a health safety issue and it's not the type of next steps are. We're working with very good personnel and not sure what happens to the next. But here we have this, again, this is what was intended, what's happening.
I can ask how, how conversations started with Alaska based stuff.
Yes, they've been aware of this issue.
What has their response?
I think, I wouldn't like to characterize it, but I will. I think they, they've been taking the approach, trying to make sense from that perspective, that they're investing lots in this equivalent. They were, they were solving a matter of nature and it's simple purpose. And I think they've been resistant to any suggestions that this has been, you know, just by the documentation, there is now a certification. So I think they, you know, they're in a different space. I mean, it's a manufacturing place.
I would think they would have a, be able to go back and factory if you somewhere.
I would hope so. So that's clear.
It seems, it seems that they would actually. Okay.
But in the meantime, we have this, we have this article in the community, it's a clear way of, of just being taken away. It seems to have most of my stuff, and I don't, so again, it's, it's not clear what the best path for this. Any other?
I think it's got a couple of questions. By the way, there are kind of a high bear areas experiencing this and they approached Alaska Way Soddy, what they're doing.
In terms of these particular parts, yes, there'd be problems throughout Anchorage and other communities across Canada. Yeah, we have, we have an organization in Gerwood that's very aware of being, that's, that's, that I report as well. That's been looking at this, actually, to be contacted by the first set of expertise on, on this issue. Obviously, it's a lot of other, this approach of God, you tell them, so, and they're being basically certain.
Do you, I have a question. Do you, do you know the difference? I've had a bear scan for nine years and Chuyak, I got it because bear, they use my trash or anything. As soon as I got it swapped. I would, I waste manager versus Alaska. Do you know the difference?
Yeah, I think they use different models. Alaska Wastes had used different models, probably the most automatic. The, the side of the use of any model, which also has to send me to one person. I just drive out and, you know. So it has to kind of be engineering point of view, these cars have to be, you know, automatically moved to the department. Trash vehicle, still in there, so.
One of the things just to think about, and I've watched them collect trash at my house. The driver pulls up, he reaches his arm out, he then clicks it, opens it, and then he pulls forward and grabs it. So I don't know if that's, I mean, that's not fully, fully automatic, but it works in Chuyak.
Yeah, well, I mean, this is a question for Alaska Wastes.
Exactly. I just tee it up for you. So as those conversations happen in your community, we say, wait a minute. I know that this is how they do it in other places.
Yes, and there are, I mean, there are other providers that are providing companies that add to the solutions, obviously. But I think you're the one that operates Gerwood, Alaska Wastes, that's where it is.
That's where I was saying. Thank you for that conversation.
Okay, just the other questions, we can move on to our next one to the section, which is the cemetery project. And again, I will stop to stop things where that sounds.
Sure. Gerwood, three years ago, finished a feasibility study for a cemetery in Gerwood. And basically it was sort of what you would consider a neighborhood cemetery. And to that process, we did find a piece of land that works and, and the feasibility showed a good way to build a cemetery there and work that out. The one thing through the process we learned is so cemetery is an area, very wide service throughout the municipality. At least, I believe it was funded, and I still think it is funded through very wide taxes. And so it was recognized that eventually if Gerwood was to build a cemetery, they would want for anchored cemetery, since they have a program in the department to run that cemetery in entirety. And the last administration suggested that, you know, they were hearing the same feedback from Eagle River Chuyak for a cemetery out there. And that it'd probably be good timing for those two communities to work together, especially if they're looking for funding sources to, to, to work this out and probably go towards bonding in the future for it. And so it sounds like on the Eagle River side, they've gotten to a point where they've made a selection on their site that they like to work in. I'm not sure if they completed the full feasibility study on that site. But we wanted to put this on the radar in the sense that probably as we go forward in the next year, as the two communities may strengthen their, their campaign for a cemetery, they'll, they may work together along with Anchorage Cemetery and helping maybe with their needs. So it becomes a entire municipality project. It's just that one neighborhood getting a cemetery, it's two areas plus the downtown, maybe looking for improvements and working all together in one bond. And then working that out. So Tommy O'Malley in Gerwood, I know he's been working closely with Tom Looney and Eagle River out there and they've been working together on this to, to put together. So I think you'll probably start to hear from Tommy, if you haven't already. And, you know, probably be reaching out and making contact about it, so.
Definitely heard about it from my folks in Chuyak. Yeah, I think it's a good strategy for the community.
Yeah. Good. Look, this is another self. There's, there's quite a lot of something switch. Oh, they're all the same, it's party. Perhaps different words between, there's still a, there's still a lot of color. We've seen this recently as well, in terms of tax issues and other things. Where I think there's a lot of consideration of what impacts is that, all of that lessons. So that's one of the, that's one of the kind of the worst things to follow. It's all the one size fits all.
Exactly. Please do preach it because I'm a gentleman.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I guess, it's critical when Kyle mentioned with the campaign, as we always said, these two cemetery ideas. It's a critical thing is educating the public why this happening, sorry. Why this is happening and how it's important for Anchorage to be collective and how it's a need because of how much space and occupancy is left here, the cemetery memorial in downtown. And then the other thing that's critical, bonding is tied to it. Because you can't just build it, you gotta have that operation to make yourself to do that. Since we have this example, that's going to give us a real clear picture of what it costs to operate something. And then, of course, if the revenue model is associated with this, the cost is, is based on that revenue model. What should that be the next 20 years to get both the cemeteries and the money? And I think they do both at the same time, making sure that someone is out of points or educating the public what this means. Yeah, we haven't had much successful bonding down there because people don't understand we're, nobody else is paying for it except Gerwood. But we just need the support for the bond rating from everybody and never get those bonds passed.
Obviously, in this case, everyone is paying for it.
Vision of that work in using.
Yeah, yes. But I know in the past, there've been some questions about how much. Because what can actually happen? I, my understanding, we can't as a group, we can as a group. Be seeking some help. So we do make use of the problem. Any other discussions or comments on the cemetery issue?
I'll just add, since we had our meeting not too many days ago, that with Tommy chairing in our first person meeting was discussing how to, on that small group of people and individuals, to have a concerted outreach effort that makes a virtual and in person, which we now and the bond potential in April 2022. So with mail in voting too, to, there's a bigger window to educate everyone and go to community council meetings, civic groups, chambers of commerce, commerce and church organizations. Because even if everyone you talk to is in favor of it, you need to make sure people that vote are going to be in favor of it. So just like you all said, but I think that was all I was pointing to.
And we've come to the end of our, our list that we compiled last week of topics. I was wondering if I'm up to anyone in the room or on the phone. Any other, any other comments or thoughts, things we should have talked about? Yeah, I don't hear anything. So we will move on to public comment. Sorry, unless there was something, I didn't look across the board. Okay, a public comment, person's offering public comment, state their full name and address, public comment is three minutes per person. Must be of subjects not listed on the agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing any public comment, so I would say thank you very much indeed. You can see how efficient we are, we've done this in four to five.
I love it. I mean, it sounds more like G P T's.
Yeah, this is probably the fastest. So, John? Thank you. We'll just assume. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys online.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I really.
Thank you.